Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming this evening. If you would like to speak during citizen input, if you'd please step forward and sign the sign-in sheet for us, and then the mayor will call upon you. Thank you.
All right, everybody, I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's seven o'clock. If you're in line to sign up to speak, that's fine. Just continue with that, and we'll go ahead and get started. This is the town hall meeting on our nondiscrimination ordinance, and I'd like to start the meeting tonight by calling on Councilman Welsh to give our invocation and lead us into the pledge of the flag. Will everybody please rise?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our kind and gracious heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for this assembly this evening and the right to assemble. We thank you for each and every citizen that's here this evening, and we just ask that you be with each of us tonight and help us to understand the issue here. Help us to keep an open mind and an open heart, and whatever decision is made, Lord, that it is fair to everyone. We just ask that you watch over each and every one of us as we leave this assembly this evening. Lord, protect us on the way home. Be well with the city. Watch over our police officers and our fire. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Corky. This meeting is being broadcast tonight. I want to thank everyone for joining us here, either here in person in the gym or virtually, and appreciate everybody keeping their mask on and socially distanced throughout the meeting. We're here tonight to discuss and get input from the public on a proposed nondiscrimination ordinance. For the purpose of background, this is something that was brought to us late last summer, early fall, by a group of Smyrna citizens, and our city attorney Scott Cochran began researching it and working on a draft ordinance. We got a couple months later down the road, last year, into the political season, into the elections, and it was decided by the previous administration to have the next mayor and council consider this ordinance. I've had conversations with several council members and citizens, and we were set to discuss this at a council meeting mid-March, and then, of course, COVID hit, and everything has been delayed. Once we figured out logistics in the new COVID environment, got our technology all set, and a host of other issues, we were able to meet virtually, and we brought the nondiscrimination ordinance up for discussion at our council meeting on April 16th. This was a committee of the whole meeting. I said then that this is an important subject for consideration, and there's no place for discrimination of any kind in the city of Smyrna. It's not tolerated, nor should it exist anywhere in our community. And this government and council has restated that position in light of recent events occurring across this country and have implemented several action items, particularly with our police department, under the fine leadership of Chief Bennett, and are discussing other community-wide action items to improve understanding and make sure it is clear that discrimination has no place in Smyrna and that everybody is welcome here. I also said at that meeting that I've given this topic a lot of time, attention, and thought, and I've considered whether a resolution or an ordinance would be more appropriate. And I believe, after giving this a lot of thought, that a resolution really would be only window dressing. And what we really need to do is have a solid, enforceable ordinance that works here in Smyrna. Other cities have implemented NDOs, and many of those are well-intentioned, but have enforceability problems, process problems, and other issues. And just because another city's ordinance is written one way or handles something a certain way doesn't mean that that would be the best approach in our city. We must design the best ordinance for Smyrna, a solid enforceable policy that strongly states that discrimination of any kind is not tolerated here and that also provides sound mechanics for penalties and enforcement of violations. We have to get this right, and when we do, it'll be truly great for our community. Scott Cochran, our city attorney, has put hours and hours into this. The original draft we discussed April 16th was more of a hate crimes bill. In that draft, we added penalties to criminal violations of existing ordinances if discrimination was involved. I'm pleased to say that when the state legislature reconvened last month, and I see that Representative Eric Allen is with us tonight, thank you for being here, to finish up the last two weeks of the legislative session, they passed a hate crimes bill, and the governor signed it into law. So what we have before us for consideration and discussion tonight in this draft is a different approach that tries to address discrimination while staying within our legal purview as a city government entity, making sure it is enforceable and that we won't have any unintended consequences. So we've had several individual conversations and some conversations with the full council, and like I said before, we want to make sure this is fully vetted and get it right. And that's the purpose of tonight, to hear from the public and get your thoughts and input. I'd ask everybody to be considerate and respectful of others' comments and points of view, and we'll have comments both here in person and over the phone from citizens who have opted to stay home in this current health pandemic environment. And like I said, this meeting is being streamed so that people can watch from home. And the way we'll do public comment, I'll turn this over to Scott Cochran in a minute. He'll present the ordinance. I'll open it up for any comments from the council, and then we'll hear from someone who's here physically, and then we'll have somebody call in, and then we'll kind of alternate in that regard. So with that, I'll turn it over to Scott to present the ordinance, and then we'll go from there. Scott Cochran.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So as the mayor indicated, this has been kind of a work in progress for a while, and we're to the point now where we know it's probably not completely final, but it's pretty close, I think, to what we will consider to vote on. Let me put this over here. So basically-
Scott, real quick, I'm sorry, I forgot. Susan Wilkinson called me this afternoon and was called away on personal business out of the state, and that's why she's not here tonight. I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that. Sorry to interrupt.
That's fine, that's fine. So basically, what we have is an ordinance that's pretty straightforward. It prohibits discrimination in certain places, and it defines where discrimination is prohibited, and then it defines what is discrimination for purposes of this ordinance. And then it has an enforcement mechanism that's designed to do more than punish someone guilty of discrimination, but it's designed also to try to elicit conversation between the party that has been discriminated against and the party that's guilty of the discrimination. So basically, it prohibits discrimination in any public place, and that's defined as an establishment that's open to the general public or an establishment that is supported by the government. So that would apply to businesses like restaurants and stores and places like that that are open to the general public. Of course, it wouldn't apply to someone's home or a private place like that. Then it goes on to define what discrimination is, and we define discrimination as an act or a policy that intentionally subjects someone to negative treatment because of their race, religion, sex, sexual orientation, gender, disability, marital status, veteran status, or age, if they're over 40. So that's pretty simple and straightforward, the way that it's written now, and we have definitions of these things, and we'll have other definitions of these. The enforcement is what's unique in our ordinance from some of the other ordinances we took a look at. We looked at every ordinance that had been passed in Georgia, and we got outside of the state and looked outside of the state for other ordinances too. And what we have drafted in this ordinance is a two-step process for enforcement, right? So the first step is basically that the people involved try to have a conversation about the situation and try to work it out. And so to kick that process off, what happens is if someone feels they're a victim of discrimination that's covered under the statute, they would file an official complaint with the clerk of Smyrna, and then that complaint is sent to an individual that we've named in the ordinance as an initial conciliator, right? And that basically is what you'd think of as a mediator. So if someone feels they're discriminated against and is covered by the ordinance, they file the paperwork with the city clerk. The city clerk shoots it over to this person who is effectively a mediator, and the initial conciliator. And the initial conciliator looks at it, and we define the initial conciliator as an attorney licensed in the state, somebody you would appoint, would not be the city attorney, it'd be someone that you would appoint, and this attorney would have to have an expertise in constitutional law and in employment law, right? Employment, because that's kind of the basic subject matter where these types of cases on a federal level go. So it's filed with the clerk, it's shot over from the clerk to the conciliator, the conciliator looks at it. If it appears to the conciliator that it's meritorious, then they start a process. If it appears that it's facially defective, they have the discretion to dismiss it, right? So they don't dismiss it. They find that it's covered by the ordinance. Then they would, in turn, schedule a meeting, right? And then the city attorneys would get involved, then they would send the paperwork to the city attorney, who would provide for service on all parties, and then schedule a meeting that's basically a mediation. And so the net effect of this is somebody's discriminated against, they file their paperwork, it goes to this person with expertise in the matter, and they schedule a sit-down meeting to talk it out, right? And, you know, I've been here 32 years and have seen Smyrna become an international city, really, and my thought is that the vast majority of situations will end there. They will be resolved at that meeting, especially if you guys appoint the type of mediator that this envisioned. So then assume that this one-on-one results in a reconciliation, then it's over. But if it doesn't, then this initial hearing officer can turn this over to the solicitor, and they start the process of prosecution like any other case, right? And it just goes into the normal type of cases that we prosecute, and the solicitor has discretion to move forward with prosecution. And if the person is acquitted, if it goes to trial, I guess it could, I don't think it will, but if it goes to trial, that they're acquitted, of course, it's like any other quittal. They're convicted, though, they face a civil penalty. And in order to have that as a remedy available, the city's going to have to do some other amendments, which are fine, with the charter amendments and some other code amendments, but they're simple amendments, and then that's it. So I know I went to a lot of detail, but the bottom line is somebody's a victim of discrimination, they want to take it to the next level, so they file formal paperwork with the clerk. Everybody gets served, they have a meeting, try to talk it out. If that's successful, it's great. If it's not, then it goes to court to be handled like any other case is.
Thank you, Scott, for all your work on this and for the presentation. And I'll open it up to any council members who'd like to make any remarks. I know what we're really here for is to hear from the public. We're not going to do any wordsmithing tonight. We're going to just take everybody's comments and views, and then we'll get into the nuts and bolts of creating a finished product on Thursday when we meet for our full committee meeting. So, council, if anybody'd like to say anything before we turn it over to public comment, I'd welcome that now. Mr. Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. Thank you, Scott, for all your hard work. And then thank you, most importantly, to everybody here joining us tonight. We just look forward to an important discussion and to help ensure that all our citizens here in Smyrna enjoy and benefit from the same rights and protections. So look forward to hearing what you all have to say tonight.
Anybody else have any comments? No? Okay. All right, we'll invite our first speaker up, and the way we're going to do this, when you come up, please announce your name and address for the record. Your comments will be limited to three minutes, just like in council meetings, and please keep your comments to the subject matter before us tonight. We have several people to speak. We have a few, six, Heather, signed up that are going to be calling in, so we'll get started. And the first person to sign up is Alex Bakri. Is Mr. Bakri here?
Hope you pardon me. I might be a little off on exactly what you're speaking on tonight, and I've had trouble hearing you up in this format, so I hope what I say is, as part of it, is appropriate for tonight. My first comment is Susan Rosenberg, who is the accountant and fundraiser for Black Lives Matter. She's a convicted terrorist, 16 years in prison. And the head of Black Lives Matter has made a public comment to burn down the system. This really bothers me that I have trouble with these statements. And the thing that, why I'm here tonight is I've heard so much about defunding the police department, and I'm a strong believer in the opposite. I think money should be allotted to help, more money, to help them in training. I would love to hear from somebody here tonight that can defend how defunding the police department is going to solve problems. Also, I was proud to have a sign made up, put in my yard, "All Lives Matter." That lasted a week. It was stolen. And I just wanted to make a comment that I hope that they consider fighting this defunding. I'm a strong believer that, which is going on everywhere, that more training for the police officers, and you stay strong on this issue, because it's strong with me. Thank you.
Heather, why don't we go to our first phone call? And just I'd ask everybody to be a little bit patient. There's a little bit of a delay. Are you prepared to make that call, or...? Okay. They had their first experience with this last night at the planning and zoning meeting, but it does give people who are a little cautious or have some medical conditions where they don't want to be out in public, the opportunity to weigh in, and we wanted to make sure everybody had an opportunity to speak that wanted to. Three minutes, and if they'll announce their name and address, please.
So this is Janet Rao, 3850 Cedar Cliff Court, 30080. So I'm calling tonight to express both my appreciation for the council considering this as an ordinance rather than a resolution, and also to ask you to consider expanding what it is that you're actually talking about within this nondiscrimination ordinance. In 1997, I faced discrimination as part of my employment and had to do quite a bit of work following federal regulations, the EEOC. And I understand those laws very well. The issue that I have with what we have in front of us tonight is that there are portions of the federal law that are not covered under the draft of the ordinance, specifically gender identity, and I don't believe I heard nation of origin either. So I would strongly encourage both of those elements to be included within the ordinance so that all of our citizens are covered and appreciated for the freedoms which we all should enjoy within our city. I would love to understand more about the considerations that we're putting behind who the person that would be the original mediator, with the language used earlier, how that person's qualifications would ensure fairness if they have the ability to simply dismiss allegations of discrimination. To me, that putting that power into one person's hands is problematic. I would encourage the board to consider having a panel of three people, perhaps, who would be designated with making that type of a determination rather than putting it on an individual. And those were my points. So I appreciate this. I'm deeply disappointed in the "All Lives Matter" comments that I just heard. That is language that really doesn't belong in the city of Smyrna. It's not the city of Smyrna that I live in. I think that we all hope that people can do the right thing, but we've seen historically and in our current world that that isn't the case and that rules and laws support each other in creating a safer community for everyone to feel safe. So, thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. We appreciate you. Next, signed up is Pat Burns. And thank you to Landon for being with us tonight to clean the microphone and podium between each speaker. We call him the sanitizer.
Good evening. My name is Pat Burns. I live at 10 Concord Road, southwest Smyrna, Georgia. Recently, Chris Clark, president and CEO of the Georgia Chamber of Commerce, said that if you want to move your community forward, it must become institutionally inclusive, culturally fluent, and gender smart. It's my understanding that two NDO sticking points are the term gender identity, which aligns with being gender smart, rendering gender identity a moot argument. And the second sticking point is dress code requirements. Wearing a necklace with a cross equals wearing a hijab, a wimple, or a clerical collar. Dress codes and gender identity are fluid. They become subjective and they change. For example, some years ago, when I was working at Grady as a nurse, I was in a dress code violation for wearing Nike shoes, white Nike shoes with a red swoosh. I had to cut off the red swoosh and get a doctor's order in order to wear the white shoes. Times change, and it's time for Smyrna to leave obsolete baggage of exclusion and become a welcoming city to everyone and pass a very good NDO.
Thank you for your comments. Heather, the next caller, please.
If you'll give us your name, please, and your address.
Yes, Jasmine Campbell, 2004 White Cypress Court, 30082. And I'm happy we're able to provide our input as a community on this topic. So, as I mentioned, I'm Jasmine Campbell. I moved to Smyrna in 2017, and my husband Ryan grew up in the Smyrna Mableton area. And so, Ryan really got to see Smyrna go from "country," in air quotes, to booming suburb close to Atlanta. And one of the things that I love most about Smyrna is its diversity. I live in Smyrna Grove. It's a newer neighborhood in the community, and I want to give you an idea of what my street alone looks like. It's majority-minority, there are two gay couples, and varying religious beliefs. My neighbors, a gay couple, will be adopting their first child within the next month. They are an example of who this NDO will protect. I want them and their future children to live, work, and play in Smyrna comfortably and equally. I want my future children to grow and play in a community that is inclusive of all. As I mentioned, one of the things that I love most about Smyrna is its diversity, and we wouldn't be who we are without it. I'm in favor of the NDO because equality matters, and I want to live in a city that makes equality a staple of who it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Jasmine, for your comments. Next is, is it LB White? Elise, sorry. It looked like E-L-B-E. Elise, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm Elise White. I live at 480 Foxfire Drive in Smyrna, Georgia. I am appreciative of the NDO being a topic of discussion today. I think it's needed more now than ever. I did notice with the appointment conciliator, I did not see, or I guess I should say I would like to see, that this person be trained or have an expertise in the area of equal opportunity and diversity, unconscious bias. I think all those things and factors need to be put in the hands of the conciliator if they are going to be representing this NDO and if they get these complaints, because it could be an opportunity at mediation to effectuate the change that we would like to see in the city, if they are qualified and have a passion for change. And I also wanted to say that it would be nice to see if there is a fact-finding investigation by a third-party agency, someone not directly within the city limits, who doesn't have the same connection with the city, so that it ensures that it is as objective as possible. I do think also that the filing fee is a little off-putting for those who may be discriminated against, because if we want to call it an equal access to employment, housing, and public accommodations, you want to not let that be a deterrent from the very beginning. So, just thinking outside of the box on ways that that can be a little bit more palatable to the average community member. And a lot of times, these come off as like a black box of how you get the information. And I think it's important that we think outside of the box for ways that we can let the public know that these things exist so that people can have a voice, and it not just be a procedural thing that you have in place, but nothing happens. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right, Heather, want to go back to the phone? I think this is our third of six people who are calling in.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thanks for this opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Mickey Higgins, and I'm here at home, safe distancing with my husband of nearly 38 years, Len Holkey Jr. We built our home at 2116 Jared Place. That's the zip code 30080, and that's in Ward 6. We built in findings Glen here in 1993, and before that, I worked in Smyrna for three years. In the 30 years we've lived or worked in Smyrna, we have seen many changes to the city we love so much. What we've enjoyed the most is how diverse Smyrna has become. I'm here tonight to speak in favor of the city's nondiscrimination ordinance, or NDO. Len and I have been LGBTQ advocates and allies for more than 40 years. We believe all people are created equal. We believe all people should enjoy the rights afforded to us, a heterosexual white couple. Len and I have never felt the sting and humiliation of discrimination. We've never been turned away from a business because of the color of our skin, or for who we choose to love, or for wearing a head covering. I urge people to see that this NDO is not an ordinance just to protect, protect the LGBTQ community. I urge people to see that this NDO protects all people from discrimination. The city of Smyrna has had an NDO in place for more than 20 years. In recent years, Doraville, Shambly, Dunwoodie, Decatur, and Brookhaven have all established NDOs. The time has come for our city to get with the times on this issue. Discrimination toward anyone is no longer acceptable. Please vote yes on this ordinance, but before you do, please put wording about gender identity into this NDO to protect my many transgender friends. All of these cities I've just listed have gender identity written into their NDO. My many transgender friends are one of the most marginalized class of people these days. I witness it firsthand, firsthand when I'm out with them. Again, please vote yes on this NDO with the addition of gender identity language. I also want to denounce the Black Lives Matter, All Lives Matters statement made by Alex Bakary early. Thanks again, and good night.
Thank you for your comments. Next that's signed up is Kathy Woolard? Is that correct? Okay. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Kathy Woolard. I live at 563 Memorial Drive, Atlanta. And what brings me here to a Smyrna City Council meeting is that I was previously the Atlanta City Council member and president of the Atlanta City Council, and introduced and with my colleagues passed the first NDO in Georgia 20 years ago. There's some aspects of that that I wouldn't recommend you follow, but what I would suggest is that you look very, very closely at all of the ordinances, the eight ordinances that have passed so far, and try to come as close to the language as possible. I'm just going to run through some suggestions really quickly, but note that Georgia is one of five states in the country that doesn't have a statewide civil rights law. And so, that means that people like a previous speaker, I think who was on the phone, has to file a federal lawsuit if they're in one of the protected classes. And as we know, there are some classes that are not yet fully protected. Georgia was one of three states that didn't have a hate crimes bill, and it took us 35 years of introducing it and talking about it. So, I think we can move a little faster. Let me just say a couple of things. Important to include gender identity, period. It's in all the other ordinances. I won't belabor that point. It is not clear in this ordinance that you mean employment, housing, and public accommodations. All of the other ordinances that have passed cover all of those categories. Your city attorney mentioned just public accommodations, but your non-enforceable purpose and intent says employment, housing, and public accommodation. So, it's important to be clear if that's what you mean. Second or thirdly, it's really important to look at the language around religious exemptions. And if you look at all eight ordinances, we've been really careful to make sure that what we're protecting is a religion's ministerial rights to restrict the tenants of the religion to people of faith. But we also want to make really, really sure that commercial activities, commercial activities that are open to members of the public should be open to all members of the public. So, when a church is performing its ministerial duties, when a church is being religious and teaching the tenants of its faith, it has full right to do all of the things that are protected in the Constitution. But if someone says they're a religious organization and steps outside that and wants to discriminate but charge money and have a business license, then that should not be acceptable. All of those things are clear. The recent Supreme Court decision gives us some guidance on that, and the language that's in all of the eight ordinances that have passed previously, past muster on that Supreme Court case, so I hope that you will look at that very, very clearly. Lastly, I think there have been some really good comments about the conciliator, and I hope you will take those to heart. I won't cover those again. I'm going to leave my business card with the clerk. If I can help you with any of the experiences with Atlanta or the other cities, I'd be more than happy to provide a discussion about that. It has, we have had it for 20 years in Atlanta. It has not been challenged, overturned, preempted by the state governments, and we feel very secure that these are on good, solid ground. And I can tell you, there have not been any complaints filed in any of the seven that have passed recently. Atlanta has a number each year. Some go through, some do not. Doesn't mean discrimination doesn't exist, but what it does do is give you the ability to say what your city's values are in a very, very clear way, and to give direction to people who are doing business in this city about what matters most, and that is giving everybody equal access as they can. And it has been extraordinarily, extraordinarily helpful to Atlanta to have this ordinance in business recruitment. I know my time is up. Thank you so much. Thanks for the work, and I hope I can be helpful to you.
Thank you, Kathy, for being here and for your service and your expertise in this particular subject. We appreciate you coming to speak. Next, we'll go to our fourth person who signed up over the phone. Heather?
All right, you may begin.
Thank you. My name is Brian Downing, 1631 Cooper Lake Road, southeast Smyrna, Georgia. And I want to thank the council for their passion for justice. We, my family are very concerned for justice within our community, but within every form of justice, there requires an element of caution as it relates to not creating new injustices. I work with anti-sex trafficking organizations, and early on, my first intent, when I heard of a man taking advantage of women, was to just arrest the man. I thought that was most important to do, but what I learned very quickly was that these men were the children of the women who were sexually exploited and had become slaves. And I realized that they too were victims. I only share this because as we move forward as a community, making ordinances, it's extremely important that we get the fine details down, and I don't believe that this is complete or ready for a vote based on what we've been hearing tonight and in other conversations we've had recently. There needs to be further detail, examples, and many other ordinances already have this as well, that statewide examples of this from the state of Georgia. So, I think it's very important that we don't create new injustices while trying to resolve another injustice. I think it's important that we go through details and make sure that we get this right rather than just adopt something quickly to say that we adopted something. And so, while I'm not opposed to an ordinance, I would love to have further, more detailed conversations, as it appears pretty clear through some of these conversations this evening, there's still some, some areas that are lacking. So, thank you so much, though, for all of your hard work. This has been awesome to hear and experience, and thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you for your comments, and I'll tell you, that's exactly why we're doing what we're doing tonight. We want to make sure we get it right. We want to hear from everybody, and I think that as this goes, as this evolves and this process goes forward, we'll, we'll, we'll get it to where it needs to be, and I appreciate those comments. Next is State Representative Eric Allen. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Eric Allen, 3331 Barrestone Circle, 30080. I have never spoken at a Smyrna City Council, and there's a couple of reasons for that. One of them is protocol, and number two is everybody on this panel is extremely responsive when we do work together on certain issues. But I did feel it was important to come and lend my voice of support for the work that you guys are doing tonight. So, I want to start by, you know, thanking and commending all of you on the panel and on the council, as well as Scott, Mr. Mayor, for your leadership on getting us to this point. This is a very, very important issue, and it says a lot that it's even gotten to this point. I also want to just reflect on the experience of the hate crime bill, and that we have been working on that in the legislature for some time. And it took a while. It took time to go through to make sure that it's right, not just expedient. And so, I would encourage you all to continue to do the good, hard work that you've been doing, continue to work on the language, especially as it relates to employment and housing, and to also make sure that it gets to a point where the community and yourselves will be proud that it is unanimously passed, an NDO in Smyrna. So, thank you, guys, for all of the work that you, you have been doing, and if there's anything I can do to provide support, I am here. But once again, I just encourage you to continue the work and make sure that you have a work product that the community and everyone is extremely proud of. So, thank you very much.
Thanks for being with us tonight. All right, back to Heather. This will be the fifth of six callers.
All right, you may, yes, ma'am, there's a 30-second delay. You may begin. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Lisa White. I'm at 642 Concord Lake Circle, Smyrna. And first off, I want to say thank you all for allowing the public to weigh in on this issue. My, after reading through what has been put together so far, my concerns are that the language in the ordinance is, is more reactive, and I really would like to see more of the language that's proactive, what, what's actually, what measures will be taken. And it also just seems to cover the private businesses versus the, you know, the city employees and the government. In regards to what everyone else has said, obviously, I would also like to see the gender identity expanded within this ordinance, as well as understanding of the, the initial conciliator, what is the term limit, what would be done in terms of making sure that it's a fair process. So, I, I am in agreement that it should be like a panel, more than one person that would have that responsibility. Other than that, I'm really glad that this has been brought forth to the public to speak on, and that you guys are taking into consideration our thoughts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lisa. Next is May Bryan, Williams Park.
Hello, everyone. My name is May Bryan, and I live at 1510 Spring Street, southeast, 30080, which is in Ward 3. And I love calling Smyrna home. I support the NDO because I love all of my neighbors, including those of a different race, religion, country of origin, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, age, disability, marital status, or veteran military status. One way I can show that I value those who are different from me is to help ensure that no one is denied a job, home, or a business service because of these differences. Smyrna is a strong city, and one reason why we're strong... Smyrna is a strong city, and one reason why we're strong is because of diversity. As a white, Christian, cisgender, straight, married woman who was born in Georgia, I've never had to fear termination or being denied a loan for my home or any service because of these factors. But I know that that is not the experience of some of my neighbors. Today, I stand to say that discrimination is wrong, and Smyrna will be stronger if we pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bryan. And Heather, to our last caller, please.
Mayor, all the callers have called, and we've spoken to them. The last caller is present here in the room this evening.
Okay, great.
And they've already signed up.
Thank you. This next speaker, I'm going to let Tammy call this one because I'm not going to butcher it like I, like I will. You try, you try that one. The handwriting on that one is tough. This is, the address is even hard. Maybe 1040 Vining's, Yoge, all right, there we go. He must be a doctor. Welcome, sir. Please announce your name because I can't. And your address for the record, please.
Yes, yes, sir. My name is Yogesh Joshi, and I'm a retired obstetrician-gynecologist. That's why my handwriting is so bad. I'm a 26-year resident of Smyrna. And before that, for 17 years, I lived in Mabelton. I practiced in Cobb County for 42 years before retiring. Cobb County has welcomed us very well. I'm here representing the Indian-American community. And the Indian-American community presents as a minority in three ways: color, nation of origin, and religion. And probably you have seen, we have our community center and temple on Cooper Lake Road, 1281 Cooper Lake Road. We established that place in, in 1984. And we have been treated very well, and I sincerely appreciate it. I remember Atlanta Road being a two-lane road. An entire development that has taken place from Widde Hill Road to 285 is exemplary. And that's why I never mind paying taxes to City of Smyrna. Thank you for great development. All the previous speakers have spoken very well. And, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate that instead of resolution, you are going for an ordinance. That's very nice. But like you said, do a complete job. You know, gender identity, maybe it was overlooked. Please go ahead and include. All men are created equal. Those are the five words on which this country was founded, and let us not forget that. This city of Smyrna, people of Smyrna, policemen of Smyrna, everybody has been very nice to us and our entire community, and we thank you for that. One, only one thing I would like to say is that the, please see to it that accommodation, residential accommodation, are, in, in, in residential accommodation, discrimination is prevented. And the reason I'm saying, many years ago, I learned from a patient who was married to a person of different race. She mentioned to me that in order to get an apartment in a particular complex, she had to let her husband sit in the car, and she went inside, and she was welcomed. And I hope this is 30 years later, so we don't have to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Doctor, for being with us. Next is Leah Bulow. And I'll say Leah was the first one who approached me, and I met her for coffee. Gosh, that must have been probably in August, or maybe...
It was like a year ago.
Yeah, it must have been in August when we first started talking about this. And I remember that conversation well. Thank you for being with us tonight.
Well, I'm glad we're here tonight, finally. My name is Leah Bulow. I live at 3294 Millwood Trail with my wife Shelley and our two children, Cooper and Arden. We moved to Smyrna in 2011 with much hesitation on my part. I was weary of Cobb County's reputation towards discrimination against homosexuals as it passed a resolution in 1993 condemning a gay lifestyle. While the resolution no longer stands, it has tarnished the county's reputation amongst many in the LGBTQ community. I was concerned about how my family would be accepted in our new neighborhood and town. However, my concerns were unfounded. We have lived in the heritage of Vining's neighborhood where we have made close relationships and friendships with our neighbors. My wife has served on the board for over seven years. I was delighted to have been proven wrong with regards to my original reservations. Over the years, though, I have learned that this has not been the case with families that look like mine for other residents here. I've heard from other families that they are not comfortable being out in their schools and churches and neighborhoods right here in Smyrna. I want for each of them what I know to be true for myself and my family. And this is exactly why I feel that the NDO is so important. It paves a path for a diverse, all-inclusive, and welcoming city. And for many current residents and potential residents, this is very, very important. It is not lost on me that passing an NDO is a simple process. It's not. I know several of you have had reservations with regards to this ordinance when it was first proposed a year ago. To quote a council member, however, from last week with regards to the NDO initiative, quote, "This is a small group of residents who are trying to shove something down our throats," end quote. This, in fact, is not true. While, yes, a small group of us have been more vocal than others, please do not confuse this with lack of public support from other residents or business owners. Personally, over the past year, I've reached out to many business owners, clergy, and residents just to attempt to establish what the baseline support of this might look like. A petition began a year ago. To date, it has over 300 resident signatures, and 44 small business owners here in Smyrna have signed it. Some of the businesses include Porch Light Latin Kitchen, the Sports Chiropractic Institute, Rev Coffee, Victory Ace Hardware, Love Street Boutique, all staples right here in Smyrna. Several wheeladers that I spoke to about this mentioned that municipalities who have NGOs in place are looked favorably upon for potential residents and businesses. I've also spoken with councilpeople who have worked with other cities that have successfully passed the NGOs. I've had conversations with religious leaders here in Smyrna that are well-respected. Some of them have even signed this petition in support. All of this to say, there have been many behind-the-scenes conversations happening. This is not something that any of us wanted rushed through without careful thought and intent. I am thankful to those of you who have responded to our emails and met with me personally to talk about the NDO. Your time and consideration speaks volumes. But please remember that just because any of us may not be a recipient or know anyone that has been discriminated against here in Smyrna does not mean that this is not happening daily. We've been in Smyrna for 10 years. We're so happy here. My family stays active in the community, supporting our local businesses and volunteering here. But I truly believe that happiness here does not necessarily equal settling for the status quo. As a community, we can come together and make Smyrna a place where all residents are valued, no matter who they love, how they worship, or where they are from. I am looking forward to a successful vote, to get this NDO passed, and to become the first city in Cobb County to do so. Smyrna's ready. Thank you.
Thank you for your passion and your involvement in the community. Did you say that your wife has been on the HOA board for seven years? I'd argue that's a glutton for punishment. All right, next on the list is Rainey Ragland, 1882 Daniel Street. Just left. How about David Thompson, Stone Creek?
Hello, my name is David Thompson. Live at 2911 Stone Creek. Lived here in Smyrna for 21 years. We have a very close-knit street. We have gay residents, African-American, all manner of nationalities. And it's one of the things we love about Smyrna is how close-knit it is. My concern about the ordinance is that there are no protections for personal religious objections. Contrary to earlier comments, our religious freedoms are not corporate, but they're individual. They're not granted by Smyrna. They're not granted by the state of Georgia. They're not granted by the federal government. The Declaration of Independence says that they're endowed by our Creator, and they're individual rights. As the ordinance has now written, for an employer to object to hiring someone who lives a lifestyle contrary to their religious convictions, be it transgender or homosexual or, or whatever, they must, they must show that that person is not qualified for the position. They're not allowed to object on religious grounds. And we've seen what happened to Hobby Lobby. For years, they had to fight it through the courts for them to maintain their religious liberties. And I think that that's a major flaw with this ordinance, and I think that that needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Ms. Kristin Suddeth. Thank you sanitizer for your hard work in between speakers.
Hello. My name is Kristin Suddeth. I live at 4045 North Cooper Lake Road. And as many of you know, I am probably one of the few people in the room that actually grew up here. And I have watched Smyrna change and grow for a few more than 30 years. We'll leave her there. And I think the thing that I want you to hear from me tonight is that you can't afford not to pass this NDO. You don't have a choice. You have a room full of people saying to you, "We're thrilled with the change that this town has seen. We love the fact that everybody on our street doesn't look just like us. We are happy to be in a community, and we're choosing, in my case, to stay in a community where people are free to express themselves and free to live the life that they're choosing to live." I agree that we need to include gender identity and these other issues that you've heard. I agree with that, that that needs to be, it needs to be added to the program to, or to the, to the paperwork, to make sure that we're including everyone in it. Because I feel like the worst thing that we can do in this case would be to exclude someone, and all of a sudden, for the right reasons, all of a sudden, you miss just that little bit, and all of a sudden, there's, there's someone left out. So I would say to you that I'm proud of this mayor and this council for finally addressing an issue that needs to have been addressed a long time ago. And I, I support you in moving forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristin. Thanks for all your work in the church and in the community. Next, we have Pastor Jeff Pennington.
Thank you, Mayor and council. And my address is 3909 Concord Walk Drive. So we just live right down Concord, not far from, from, from Councilman Welch. So I get to live in his ward, and I'm thankful for his work and for the work of all of you. And I too just want to just express how glad I am also to be a citizen of Smyrna. We moved here after living away from Georgia for, I would, I would just go ahead and argue, for way too long. And getting to come back close to home and be in such a great community is just a testament to the depth of our community. And as we have heard expressed many, many times, so many of us are so grateful that we get to live and call each other neighbor. And it's wonderful that we can do that. And it's great that we can love each other in times we agree and also in times that we don't. But that love can always be there, and it transcends those times of disagreements. And I just want to begin with a brief word of affirmation. Mayor Norton, City Council, it's evident that you have collectively led from your convictions. And I affirm your effort to listen to your constituency. I commend the need to address invidious discrimination in all forms. And I also appreciate the resolution against racism because it truly has no place in the John Paul City. And if anyone is injured or is hurt due to invidious discrimination or due to racism, whoever that person might be, it is incumbent on everyone in this room and everyone in Smyrna, me included, to come to that victim's defense. But I got to share that this particular ordinance, I just don't think is going to bring the intended results the mayor and the council hope. This ordinance requires, and please hear me with the language because that's really what I'm concerned about, is the language of this ordinance and whether or not it's truly necessary. This ordinance requires men to be allowed, it requires men to be allowed to compete in women's sports. And as the ordinance reads, it is considered negative discriminatory treatment to tell a man that he can, cannot change in a woman's changing room or restroom. And this ordinance changes our language in forcing different use of pronouns. It excludes mention of the way that socioeconomic differences bring discriminatory treatment against those who are left homeless. While other municipalities join us in our weakness, we got to find better solutions to take care of this group of people. And I just wanted to share that I'm thankful for the language of the ordinance, how it attempts to give exemption to religious organizations. But I still believe that the language is unclear. And placing the exemption for churches in the category of practices rather than a category for religious organization, association, or society, it leaves room for wrongful interpretation. And as this ordinance is drafted, city officials could read it to mean that all actions by a religious organization are permitted, but it could also mean that only certain practices are. And though these practices are not defined, though these practices are not defined or permitted, and as a pastor, my perspective concerns the freedom of our church to honor the Lord by practicing a sexual ethic that has stood for several millennia. It also concerns the particular freedoms of my church members as they live and operate in the public marketplace. The subjectivity of the ordinance gives the initial conciliator the too much authority to determine who is and who is not guilty of invidious discrimination. And it may be assumed by the drafters that protected freedoms given to every citizen in the Constitution will be respected and invoked. But the severability clause at the end of the ordinance anticipates this not to be so. And will the council, council and mayor revisit the ordinance and include language that does indeed protect the welfare of all who live and work within the city? The ordinance includes language against discrimination, but it should also be, it should also explicitly state protections afforded to all citizens by way of the First Amendment. For our city to thrive, both rights have to be held together. So can the subjectivity of the ordinance, which gives the initial conciliator little guidance, be replaced with language that defines the actions and behaviors that are clearly defined as being offensive and deserving of punishment? Can't the ordinance simply state, instead of under practices, that this ordinance shall not apply to a religious organization, association, or society? Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor, for being with us. Next, I'd like Pastor Derek Porter to come up, please. Sorry, Pastor, I skipped over you earlier. You were supposed to go after Leah. My fault.
My name is Derek Porter. I am the senior pastor of Smyrna First United Methodist Church, 1315 Concord Road, right across the street from my brother Jeff. I, I think I'm pastor to half of you. And I have worked with you since the world stopped turning, since the world changed. And I have been inspired by the good work that you have done and care... And I have been inspired by the good work that you have done in caring for the people in our community. I have watched you and been with you as you have had to make difficult decisions and as you have tried to lead in a very difficult world, and I applaud you for that leadership. Applaud you for that very, very difficult world and that very, very difficult time. All of us who are public leaders know how difficult it is, know how impossible it is most of the time. And thank you for having the courage to bring this NDO up here today. Thank you for having the courage to, in the middle of a pandemic, be offering the wisdom and the welcome to all in our community and all who would want to be a part of this community. Jesus does not speak to sexual ethic. He does, however, speak to being a good neighbor. And He defines our neighbor as anyone. And He defines faith, good faith, by being able to love and accept people who are different than you. And we do hear Jesus talking about a council. "I'm a country preacher from South Georgia. It's all I am and it's all I want to be. And so I listen to the words of Jesus, and I ask you two here. When He spoke to the council, or when He spoke about the council in Matthew, He said this. You're like whitewashed tombs, beautiful on the outside, dead on the inside. You put boundaries, you put weights, you put hardships on the people's back and make it harder for them. And the reason He was saying that about that council, that religious council of the day, is this. They were rejecting Him and the change that He brought. And be very clear, He was changing the world and the religious establishment was rejecting Him. And so when He said, "You're putting weights on people's back," He was saying, "You're pushing people away from me." Thank you that in the middle of a pandemic, you're taking the weights off of people's backs. That in the middle of this hundred-year crisis, you are making a statement that Smyrna is welcoming to all and that Smyrna is a place where we will not put weights on your back. That is the Christian thing to do. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council, Mr. Cochran, thank you for the time.
Thank you, Pastor, and thank you for wearing a Georgia Bulldog mask because I really, really like it. Go Dogs. Next, Ms. Maryline Blackburn.
Good evening. My name is Maryline Blackburn. I live at ten thirty-four Huntington Trace, Smyrna. And I am pleased to see that this council is open to this matter. Thank you Cathy for being here tonight and shedding those most important words and offering your assistance to help us in this situation. The year was eighteen sixty-seven, and of course, I wasn't around at the time, but the month was in August and the date was the twenty-ninth when Karl Heinrich stepped out as the first homosexuality to speak. The year is now twenty twenty. The month is July and the date is the fourteenth. And thank you to Leah and many of her other friends who came forward to say, "This is an issue that matters and Smyrna needs to take a stance." And I truly agree with them. I must say that I am pleasantly surprised that you have taken this giant step to move our city forward. If we are truly a city that does not stand for discrimination, this will not be a check in your box. Smyrna council members have said to me that, or some of them, I should say, that they don't believe that this is an issue of magnitude in our city. Well, it is. Just because you are not on the side of receiving the punishment or whatnot doesn't mean that it's not an issue. And we must be a city that is preemptive in this matter and in doing what is right. And this is a part of being a sustainable Smyrna. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blackburn. Next, Leanne Rakoff.
Hello. My name is Leanne Rakoff. I'm at twenty-seven eighty Frazier Street. I also brought my Georgia Tech mask just in case anybody.
Booze are in good.
I'm at twenty-seven eighty Frazier here in Ward Three and I'm the Smyrna Parks and Rec Commission Representative for Ward Three. I'm so happy to be here. Short story about my past here in Smyrna. My grandparents moved here in the mid nineteen sixties from New Jersey. My mom and aunts and uncle were graduates of Osborne High School. When my mom was ten, the KKK burned a cross in their front yard all because my grandfather invited a black coworker over to pick out a puppy from a surprise litter. Nevertheless, they continued to call Smyrna home and frequent the American Legion for another thirty years, which is probably where I started smoking unknowingly. Just kidding. And I'm proud to call Smyrna home for seven years as well. Mayor and city council members, thank you for putting together this proposed ordinance. It shows you're keenly aware that there have been inclusivity issues in the past and that we can continue to move forward as a kind city. What you have proposed tonight has had a great amount of thought behind it. However, I'm disappointed in two things that have been addressed a couple of times, but I do believe they bear repeating. To define sexual orientation with only three of the many defined orientations and to completely ignore protecting those with a different gender identity than you or I seems like a gross oversight. And it could leave room for legal discrimination should those who fall into those very real identities have action taken against them. Please hear me and several of our other neighbors, and is that Cathy Woolard? And please don't pass this bill as it's written, but keep continuing to work on it. Thank you.
Thanks for being with us. Leanne was sitting on her deck on Frazier Street today when I ran by at about eleven fifteen. And when she saw me, I'm not sure that she thought I would make it here tonight. It was pretty hot, but I'm pleased to say that I did finish that run. Next is Reverend Charles Maxwell.
Good evening. Reverend Charles Maxwell, fifty twenty-five Duckstrud Drive. Been a resident of Smyrna since two thousand and three. I'd like to thank the mayor, the council people, the city attorney for putting this ordinance together. I come in two forms. I come, one, as a corporate executive to say it's imperative that Smyrna pass this to retain and also attract the best and the brightest and also bring the companies that we want into the city and to promote the lifestyle that we want the city to have. I also come to you as a pastor of the Breakthrough Fellowship right here in Smyrna, Georgia as well. And I heard an earlier comment talking about how this ordinance could affect the church. And the thing I'm going to bring or remind people, that the church itself has to also account for its own sin and the prejudice and the discrimination that the church has put against people. And so as a social advocate, I challenge the church to not hide behind the symbols of love and faith, but to really step out and do what Jesus did. He challenged the Saddites, the Pharisees, and the scribes to really do what God called them to do. Is to love their neighbor as themselves. I also wanted to just point out a couple of different pieces here. In the definition of who is protected, I would like to see homelessness or homeless people included in that definition. It talks about the burden of proof or the intent of this ordinance. And I would go back to the city attorney and say, "I think it's ambiguous about who the burden of proof is on and how that should actually be applied." I agree with the comments about, I agree with the comments about the fee. I think there should be an exception made to the fifty-dollar fee. I understand why that fee is there to stop just random acts or random people bringing it. But I do think there should be an exception made for people who cannot afford that. Looking at section sixty-six dash forty-three, item number one, it talks about religious organizations. I don't, as I read it, the preamble to that does not coincide with that first piece. So I would ask the city attorney to go back and rewrite that or at least bring that out from that preamble because to me it contradicts. I think you're trying to give an exemption to religious organizations, and when I read it, I don't explicitly see that. I would also look to strike items three and four in that paragraph. I look at those as more defenses and not exceptions. And some other people have brought these up, but number four, when it talks about grooming, certain black people with braids or dreads that could possibly be problematic in that particular sense. And then I've also heard people talk about the fact that this ordinance could possibly take away First Amendment rights. But when you go back and look at Title VII under the Civil Rights Act, this ordinance in some respects is in line with that. So I do not see where a contradiction is there. So I thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, Reverend. Next is Mr. Monty Bai. Is that Ohio State?
O-H.
Oh, boy. Sorry I brought it up.
Somebody has to represent the Big Ten around here. My name is Monty Bai. My husband and I live at fifteen sixty-five Spring Street Southeast. We've lived there for fourteen years. And my glasses are fogging up, so I'm going to take the mask off. Some have questioned whether or not these basic human rights protections are necessary in Smyrna and whether or not this is just an initiative of a few select folks. We can see by the turnout tonight that clearly there's a lot of interest in there and it's not just a few loud folks that are making this an issue. Research by the Center for the American Progress, the Center for American Progress in two thousand and sixteen, a study showed one in four members of the LGBT community experienced discrimination in just the past year. There's no reason to believe that Smyrna is immune to this type of discrimination. In twenty twenty, in the city of Smyrna, a loving and committed gay couple can get married one day and the next day be legally denied housing because of that marriage. We all know in our hearts, this is just simply wrong. According to the Public Religion Research Institute's survey, NDOs enjoy broad support nationally and in the state of Georgia. Nearly seven in ten Americans favor laws that would protect the LGBT people from the discrimination in the job market, public accommodations, and housing. In a two thousand and seventeen PRR poll, sixty-five percent of Georgians support such protections. This support crosses political parties, ideology. Majorities in all religious groups are supportive of such protections. Passing this NDO ordinance in Smyrna is not only the right thing to do, but it's good for business. It's good for Smyrna's image and it's good for our tax digest. Ninety-two percent of Fortune five hundred companies have afforded similar protections to the LGBT community, including employers that are right here in Smyrna, Publix, Kroger, and Home Depot. They don't do this only because it's the right thing to do. They do it because their employees and their customers overwhelmingly support these protections. In short, they recognize it's good for business. I'm asking for your support in providing the same basic rights for the LGBT community that you and your family enjoy today. Let's send a message to the millions of people that visit Cobb County every year that we support NDO protections and that Smyrna is open for business for all. Finally, let's do the right thing and in doing so, tell the estimated two thousand-plus Smyrna residents of the LGBT community that we see you, we hear you, we value you, and we welcome you. Thank you for your consideration. I do have a couple of questions. I want to reiterate what I think most people have said tonight about gender identity. An NDO without gender identity included in those protections sends a terrible message to the community. And an NDO without it is not an NDO, and I would not support passing it. Mr. Cochran did a good job of explaining the process that we would go through, but I'm not sure that it's abundantly clear in the language, the way it exists today, that it works the way he described it. When I read it, and I read it several times, it's quite confusing. I'd like to reiterate that having a conciliator seems to be an extra layer of bureaucracy that's not necessarily necessary. I'm assuming it's in there because there's a concern that there might be a number of frivolous accusations or suits brought forward. The city of Atlanta, as was previously mentioned, has had this ordinance in place since two thousand and three. It was recently reported that during a three-year period that only thirteen claims had been filed. A deterrent to frivolous claims can be provided, number one, by requiring the fifty-dollar administrative fee and two, requiring the loser of any case pay the appropriate fifty-dollar fee and any administration and arbitration fees. And I think that would address the concern about frivolous claims and eliminate the need for a cumbersome conciliatory process. And I agree also, that's a lot of power for one person to be yielding and has the ability to shut everything down very quickly. And again, I don't think the language in there relative to what the arbitrator would do, as Scott explained it, is very clear. So I think we need to spell that out a little bit further. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks for being here. I see Jason here too. Didn't you get like teacher of the century or something? I mean, we're in the presence of greatness here. I know. Next, we have Sean Martin.
Good evening. My name is Sean Martin. I live at twenty-eight eighty-four Anderson Circle. And I have been there for almost twenty years. To all, you've been given the privilege of leading your citizens in this city through very difficult times. COVID, George Floyd, the fight for social justice, what next? And we are learning what real leadership looks like. True leadership is responsive, reflective, and responsible. I support the NDO because it has the potential to embody all that is good in Smyrna. Smyrna is a great place to live. And you are here because you feel the very same way. Sure, Smyrna has had a few skeletons in its closet that hearken to a past unfair to people other than. But we can begin to right those wrongs in a profound way. I really believe that the NDO is Smyrna's opportunity to really send a message that Smyrna is a place too busy to hate. Not to steal that from the city of Atlanta, but it truly is a place that is meant for all people. From the bottom of my heart, I love this city. I believe that the NDO is just the perfect statement at this time in history for Smyrna to communicate that to its citizens that it is time for change. It is time for Smyrna to stand up for all citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. And thank you for responding and meeting with me when I reached out earlier in the year. It's nice to see you tonight because we've done a bunch of Zoom calls recently and it's just not the same. And I'll agree with you that if anybody has a crystal ball that can tell us what's going to come at us next, we'd sure love to know and get a little bit of a heads up. This has been quite a run. Next, we have, oh, man, I'm going to get this one. I'm going to butcher it. Noble. Noble Dwarika? Is that pretty good? All right. I ought to know that one. Thanks for your participation at Rose Garden the other day.
Good evening, everyone. To all my neighbors as well, hello. My name is, I'll just put this up a little bit so it's easier for me to talk. My name is Noble Dwarika. I live at 2599 Bates Street in Rose Garden Hills. And I think that this is a really unique moment in history for our community. We get to define ourselves in a new way. And I know that all of you up here probably did not imagine the set of circumstances that would lead you here today, from COVID, George Floyd, Black Lives Matter. We have a real, unique opportunity to define ourselves as a city of Smyrna. I live in Rose Garden Hills, a place that was segregated not too long ago. So this NDO means everything to me. And my rights and the rights of other people should not be a game of semantics. And after reading this NDO, it is quite apparent without a J.D. that this is rife with legal loopholes. So if we're gonna take a bite out of racism, transphobia, homophobia, all the phobias, we really have to give this NDO some teeth. So with that being said, I have a few micro modifications that we need to make. We need to get rid of the filing fee period because we don't need to create any more economic barriers for people to address discrimination. As we know, inequality, socioeconomic inequality is racialized, so we need to get rid of that. Next, there should not be one person that gets to define what is discrimination. There needs to be really a diversity council to address this issue. People that are qualified, that can make, that are trained, and that can identify discrimination when they see it, not just one person. And lastly, we need to make sure that we are specific and we use legal language to protect people regardless of how they love, regardless of how they love and how they choose to express themselves. So we need to be very clear about sexual orientation, not just three. We need to be very clear about gender identity. We need to protect everybody. So with that being said, I thank you all for having this meeting here today so that as a citizen I could give input. I love the city of Smyrna. I'm here to represent myself and my community, so thank you again.
Thank you for being here. If y'all recognize Noble, he organized one of the peaceful protests here in the city, and he was on the news last week touting the Support Smyrna program when we handed out grocery store gift cards in the neighborhood. So thank you for being involved. Next, we have John at 3634 Wisteria Lane. There's a reason I didn't read the last name because I'm gonna let him say it.
Thank you, Mayor. No worries about the last name. I get it a lot. My name is John Witkowitz. I live at 3634 Wisteria Lane here in Smyrna. First off, go dogs. And second, thank you guys for taking up this issue and for the opportunity to speak on this. I'm a 10-year resident of Smyrna. I'm a proud father of three. I am involved at my church, St. Benedict's, here in Smyrna. I am about as privileged as it gets in this country. I'm an able-bodied, straight, white, cisgender Christian man. There is no way in which I am discriminated against, but I know my experience is not the same as everyone here in this room or in our city. I want all the people in our community to be as free, privileged, and protected as I am. Smyrna is a vibrant, diverse, welcoming community, and this ordinance should reflect that. It should reflect that diversity, that welcoming spirit. I grew up in Georgia. I grew up saying y'all. Y'all means all. I fear the terms gender and sexuality, as noted in the current version, are too narrow, and they are, or they're open to narrow interpretations. We should add gender identity and gender expression to the protected classifications and broaden sexuality to the much wider LGBTQ community. 20% of millennials identify as LGBTQ. I want my city to make it clear that everyone, and especially my children, and all our children, regardless of what they look like, who they love, or how they identify, are safe from discrimination. Some earlier mentioned nation of origin and thoughts on the conciliator role, people living in homelessness, and other socioeconomic barriers such as fees they cannot afford. I do support those as well. Please expand the protections considered, and let's say to our community and our neighbors in Georgia that we are every bit as welcoming the community I know we are and that we can be. Black Lives Matter, Trans Lives Matter, and LGBTQ Lives Matter. Let's say so publicly and do something about it by passing this ordinance, and please, let's not stop here. Thank you.
Thanks for being here. All right, sanitizer, you're up. And then Ms. Mary Ann Mulrain, Valley Parkway.
Hello. My name is Mary Ann Mulrain. I reside at 4581 Valley Parkway. Currently, I am renting an apartment, but I am, I would really love to make Smyrna my permanent home. I do applaud you in the beginning stages of this NDA. A few changes that I would like to, that I would like to express. I do agree with everyone with regard to the sexual orientation. I also agree with regard to the filing fee. I think we should remove that filing fee. I also agree with a few other people with regard to the conciliator, making sure that they're trained and are well-versed in the progression in Smyrna affairs. I also agree with regard to the third-party investigator, investigator being a separate entity. Sorry, I have like 50. I would like to also add that when investigating these claims, that we make sure that we include wording that protects people's past when discussing these issues. I would also like to know what the consequences are, because even though we just have the NDO or NDA, I'm sorry, it doesn't really give any sense of urgency or any sense of cause and effect. Also, when you were speaking earlier, you said that this does not translate to individuals in their homes, which is understandable. However, with the recent events, especially with regard to Ahmaud Arbery, I am a runner. I'm a cyclist. I'm a triathlete. I am active. I hike. I do all of that. One of my biggest worries is having a police call just because I'm black in any situation. And I think that we should include some types of protection with regard to that. Yeah, that's all I got.
Thanks for being here. All right, next we have Mr. James Pullan, Dunn Street. And then we have two more signed up after. It's Meredith Carter and Brian Jackson. I'd ask if there's anybody else who's here. I want to make sure everybody is heard. If you aren't James, Meredith, or Brian, and you want to speak, please make sure that the clerk knows so that we can make sure we hear from you. Mr. Pullan.
Thank you, Mayor. James Pullan, I live at 3469 Dunn Street in Smyrna with my wife. And we've lived here for five years, and we love the town as well, and we love the people here. And we're thrilled to hear everybody standing up for their rights and for the things that they believe in. And my concern is, I want to stand up for my rights as well and just make sure that while we try to protect and stand up for everyone in here, that religious rights and religious freedoms are not impeded, whether that be through the organizations, religious organizations, or individuals. I'm not, I'm not trained in law. I'm just a layperson, but I just want to take a look at the exceptions policy. And under number one, 6643, number one, if I read this, it just says, notwithstanding the foregoing, the following are not discriminatory practices prohibited by this ordinance. Number one, a religious organization, association, or society. And the way I read that is, this merely says that a religious organization existing is not discriminatory. It is not a, it is not a discriminatory practice, a religious organization just merely existing. I think this was addressed earlier, but I would like it to protect some of the practices and services or behaviors or those sorts of things that are upheld within the organization. I think the wording could be a little bit better there. And as far as individual religious freedoms, I just hope that while we're trying to protect everyone's freedoms in here, regardless of race, gender, everything that's listed here, I just hope that you'll also consider the religious freedoms and the rights that we've enjoyed in this country since its inception and that you would protect those as well, whether they be business people or in whatever case. Again, and I want to also just add, I hope that the freedoms and the protections that I'm asking for to protect religious freedom would apply to all religions. I happen to be a Christian. I serve my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, who actually might be a little bit different than some of the other Jesuses we've heard. The Jesus that I serve actually upholds the law and the prophets, the Old Testament, which does condemn homosexuality as a sin. And that's the Jesus that I serve. So please understand that not all Christians may think alike, or people that associate with Christianity may think alike. So those are the things that I'd like to keep protected, and I hope you'll do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pullan. Next, we have Meredith Carter, Mosaic Way.
Hey, Derek. My name is Meredith Carter. I live at 1552 Mosaic Way in Smyrna. I've been here 13 years. I'm also a business owner in Smyrna. I own my own law firm. I'm a plaintiff employment lawyer, and I file discrimination cases daily, just about. So looking at this, I'm happy that you've changed the employment for the number of employees to one as opposed to 15. I do like that. I know there's been concern about the $50 filing fee. It's $400 in federal court, so to me, the $50 is not as extreme. However, in federal court, you know, you have a way to file in form of paparazzis, which you can't, when you can't afford to pay the filing fee. So for those individuals that are concerned about paying it on their own, they could file and plead in form of papara. A couple of concerns I have are also about the conciliator. As a plaintiff attorney, I have to deal with summary judgment all the time, where a judge tosses out your case before you can get to a jury. And as I know, this is a little bit different. However, the conciliator seems to have just a lot of power, as other people have noticed. Maybe change where the conciliator comes into effect, not at the very beginning, because it looks like the conciliator is just looking at the complaint initially, but they're not looking at the complaint and the answer that's being filed. Maybe have them look at both of those and then determine based upon that whether you're gonna go to mediation or not. The timeframe for the mediation is another concern of mine. I mean, these are 14 days, 15 days. As an attorney myself, those are very, very tight deadlines. I feel like we can extend those deadlines because I feel you're gonna get a lot of pushback. I can't come in mediation in two weeks, especially a company that will have to be represented in Georgia. Every company has to have an attorney represent them in Georgia. They cannot defend themselves. So there's, so that's one of my concerns. And the timeframe for the answer is not clear from this bill, unless I've missed it. The mandatory mediation, what if, what if both parties don't want to go to mediation? Can they just go straight to court? There's too many, somebody else pointed out, there's too many avenues and channels to try to get to court. So maybe add something that you do not have to go to mediation. Another thing is where are you choosing your mediators? Are we choosing from AAA? Are we choosing from miles? I mean, which, can we choose anybody in the state of Georgia to be a mediator? That's not clear from here. The other is the remedies. What are the remedies here? Are we, how much are, are there damages caps? Are there restraining orders? Are there a way to get attorney's fees? If someone comes to me and they're saying they want to sue somebody in Smyrna, I'm gonna want to be able to recover fees if I'm gonna represent them on a contingency fee level. So I don't see any fee provision here. I think that's a whole. And also, the venue, just being a municipal court in Smyrna, if there's an employer in Smyrna who has 15 or more employees and falls under Title VII Disability Discrimination or the Discrimination Act, then I'm going to file probably in federal court. So I want to be able to, I want to bring this ordinance in also. I just feel like that's limiting as well. And the burden of proof, somebody mentioned, but the burden of proof, you know, is always on the plaintiff unless, except for your defenses from the respondent, which is on the company for proving the defenses. So those are, I feel like, you know, there's just some holes here. Need to go back and look at Title VII more closely, and you're missing just some nuances that I think can give you a big headache later. And I am curious to know how you're gonna file conciliators. I myself would like to be, I would like to put my name in the hat for that as someone who's practiced employment law since 2008. But I just, you know, I would love to be a source if anyone wants to contact me about helping on revisions of this. But I do applaud Smyrna. I think it's great. I'm really excited about it because I know Georgia has no extra protections for this outside of Title VII in the federal protections. And the only time I get to go to state court is if it's a sexual harassment case that has some touching involved. So thank you again for this, and appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. The last speaker I have is Brian Jackson. Before Brian comes up, is there anybody else who did not sign up but that would like to be heard this evening? Okay. We'll just have you come up after Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Brian Jackson. I stay at 3574 South Sherwood Road, Smyrna 30082. A couple of things that I wanted to just bring up are, one, with one that everyone, not everyone, but some folks spoke about earlier is with, as far as with the arbitrator, I think that it needs to be more than just one person arbitrating over the issue, but it needs to be at least a committee. I would recommend three or more and a diverse committee. And the second thing is in regards to section 6643, number four. I think that this particular one kind of needs to be defined more. It's very vague and can be used, but just to make sure that this is not discriminatory and can basically undermine this entire ordinance so that, so that it doesn't depict just a particular race or, or any orientation or anything of that matter. I think it's one that should be looked at just to be more clearly defined because from a dressing, grooming standards deemed appropriate, that's very vague and subjective. And so I think I would, I would like for you all to review this and just kind of detail and flesh that out a little bit more. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. One gentleman raised his hand. Come on up, please. Anybody else? Okay. Yes, sir.
Well, thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Mayor. My name is Kobe Apong. I reside at 1308 Kirkland Lane. I didn't really, I didn't necessarily want to speak, but I felt the need to say something. What I'm about to talk about is What I'm about to talk about is not directly, I would say it's not exactly what is being discussed tonight, but it's kind of complimentary, you know what I mean? And, Mr. Mayor, you know what I'm about to talk about. It's about police reform. And I'd just like to say thank you so much for responding to me when I emailed you. And thank you for, I think it's Councilmember Travis? I don't know. Okay. Thank you so much for responding as well. And, Mr. Mayor, thank you for Chief Bennett. Thank you so much for, you know, allowing us to, allowing the, allowing him to serve the city of Smyrna because I'm originally from Ghana. I went to college in London. I lived in Italy, and then I moved to Atlanta. I've lived in so many different cities all over the world, and I always tell all my friends that Smyrna, Georgia is actually like a representation of the United Nations. It's like people from all over the world live here, and it's the epitome of a melting pot of America. And to have a police chief, with everything that's going on in the world and in this country, to have a police chief who was ready to sit down with me, and we went through the police reform that has been taking place even before he was police chief. It's, it's really a testament of what Smyrna really is. I sat with him for an hour with my family. He was so welcoming. Everything was so transparent. And I talked to him a lot. I'm a political junkie, so I know a lot of stuff going on in America in different cities and how a lot of my friends complain about the non-transparency in the police department. We have a very transparent police department here. I asked all the questions I can ask of Chief Bennett, and he was, he was so welcoming. I tell my friends, I'm like, I have the phone, the cell phone number of my police chief, and they think I'm crazy, you know? But it's, it's, I'm saying that, as a black man who lives in America, basically, who lives in Georgia and who lives in Smyrna, it's a big deal that I have so much confidence in the police department in Smyrna. And thank you again, Mr. Mayor, for responding to me. And the chief is not here, but I really appreciate the fact that he sat down with me and he answered all my questions, and he, even he told me to let all my friends come over to have a party at the police headquarters. So that was interesting. But thank you so much. I just wanted to say that.
Thank you for your comments. I'd agree with you. We've got pretty much the best in the business in Chief Bennett. And as I look out at the audience, I see several of you who I know the chief has spent time with talking about police policies. And if any of you so wish, I know he would entertain time with you as well. And I'll definitely pass along those words. That's kind words to him. Yes, Doctor? Believe as it's written now and as it's understood, that person would be appointed by this mayor and council. So not necessarily. Correct. And Scott, you can tell me if I'm wrong on that, but I think that's correct. Thank you. Well, that concludes our public comment. I want to reiterate how appreciative I am of everybody taking their time to be here, especially in light of the pandemic conditions that we continue to live in. You know, this is what it's all about. We're changing as a city and having input from the public and making sure that we get this right and all of our policies right is what we're going to try to do now and going forward. So with that, I'll adjourn this meeting. We are going to meet on Thursday, and we'll incorporate a lot of the suggestions that we've heard tonight. Lot of thoughtful discussion and just really appreciate it. And then we'll either have it on the agenda Monday. I understand some council members may not be here Monday. So it'll either be this council meeting Monday or the following council meeting. This will be up for a vote. Thank you, everybody, for being here. Meeting is adjourned.